All right, welcome everybody to Wednesday, February twenty six, twenty twenty five. Regular meeting of the Seaside Planning Commission. Sorry for the late start. Let's call the meeting to order and begin with a little.
Commissioner Wen. Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner La Micah.
Present.
Commissioner Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Dodson.
Present.
And Chair Silva.
Present.
We have a Corin.
Okay, thank you. Item number three, review of the agenda. Have any items arisen after the seventy two hour posting deadline that we would want to take a load on to include tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the January eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. Do you have any questions or discussions? All right, entertain the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the January meeting.
I second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I don't think I, I think I need to abstain because I wasn't here that day, was I? Pretty sure I was. I think I was. I was?
Yeah.
I was on vacation the following week then. Sorry, okay, you know, getting all the memory isn't all these, what did you say? All right. Public comment period number five, if there's anybody in the auditorium that would like to. Or I think we're doing online as well, or no, are we not doing online now? This is for items that are not on tonight's agenda. If anybody wants to come forward, they can speak for three minutes. And need to identify themselves. Do we have anybody interested?
I just have someone online with their hand raised.
Do you want to see what they're?
Elena, would you like to comment?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Elena and I live at the Pacific Heights condo complex. And I, I take the bus at Hillby and Schaefer. And I was wondering if the city would consider putting like a crosswalk or a stop sign because Hillby is a very busy intersection. And I had to like dash across the street to get down to the bottom of the hill. And like people are going like at least more than twenty five miles an hour in a residential neighborhood. And so would that ever be? Would you ever consider doing that?
Well, I can tell you, we can't make a decision on the spot, but because you've made your public comment, that's been heard by our planning staff. And they will certainly consider your request. I would suggest, however, that you also submit maybe something in writing, like by email to the city, just so that that record is, is, you know, on someone's desk as well. You can maybe point out specifically which intersection you, you're, you're talking about on Hillby.
Yeah, it's on, it's the intersection of Kimball where it intersects the condos and then Kimball runs back and, you know, both ways, right and left, and then goes down to the bottom of the hill by Hillby and Schaefer.
Perfect. Well, thank you for your comment. What we'll do then is, is we'll make a note of it that, that you've asked that staff at least investigate for the access to the bus stop, that there would be a crosswalk closer to the bus stop on Hillby.
Well, no, I mean, like, what I mean is that, like, when you're walking from the condo down to Hillby and Schaefer, you have to cross in the middle of the street on Kimball and that, that's a very busy intersection. And, and I mean, I almost got hit on Monday and someone was going at least, I don't know, it seemed like eighty, ninety miles an hour and I'm like, I'm just, I'm gonna get hit by a car, you know, trying to cross in the middle of the street and there's no other crosswalks around by the condos trying to get down to the bottom of the hill.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Your comment is noted. And staff is, I see taking notes here.
Yeah.
About that. So they'll take that to Public Works. And, and then, you know, that decision isn't made by us at this body, but you've spoken it aloud in a public setting. So we know what the concern is.
Yeah.
We have a staff member who has, has a response.
Yeah, and Elena, I would also recommend either leaving your email or emailing us, or you could also reach out to the Traffic Advisory Committee, which should have a posted agenda. Those, all three of those methods would be an effective way to, for us to continue this conversation.
Oh, is it email the city person, like whoever, the city mayor or whatever?
Well, preferably with city staff. We can address this. Or is there, Jennifer, is it possible for her to leave her email in the chat? Or for you to send? Here, I'm gonna, is it possible for me to give you my city email right now and you can email me?
Sure.
Okay, it's A M Y R I C K.
Okay, hold on. Let me write this down.
Yeah.
Okay. A M Y.
I C K.
O C K.
R I C K. So Amy Rick.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, at at C I dot seaside dot C A dot U S.
Amy Rick. At C I dot seaside dot U S.
Dot C A dot U S.
Oh, dot C A.
Yeah. So C I as in the first two letters of city, the name seaside, C A as in California, U S as in United States.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for expressing your concerns.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, do we have anybody else? I don't think so. So we'll move on to business items. Six A, use permit application, U P two zero two five dash zero zero one, C Pacific Investments Property Owner and Betty Face Su Fan applicant are requesting approval of a use permit. U P twenty twenty five dash zero zero one to cannabis cultivation to one seven one seven C Fremont Boulevard. This use would be associated with an existing cannabis microbusiness. D B A Seaside Green located at seventeen seventeen B Fremont Boulevard in the C R G or Regional Commercial Zoning District. The existing business consists of retail sales, non volatile manufacturing and distribution and would remain unchanged. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA. Staff, it's yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nice to see you all tonight. Thanks for that introduction.
Can you help me move forward?
Thank you. So the purpose of this is to review a use permit application for a cannabis microbusiness. And looking at the environmental review, it's exempt. It's essentially a tenant improvement of an existing space. There's no added square footage, no change in intensity from what we classified as a group one use related to parking. Next slide.
Thanks.
A little bit of a background for a reminder, going back to some of the original retail cannabis permits issued in twenty eighteen through a council resolution. This was one of them, started as Plantacea. And then more recently in September amended the use permit for a cannabis microbusiness, which they went from taking their retail and combining it with two other microbusiness uses required by the state. When you have three components, you can designate yourself as a microbusiness, which saves on fees from the state, but also allows you to integrate all of the potential uses. And one that they had not yet done was for cultivation. And when I say they hadn't done that, you might say, ah, but I remember they did come forward with that. They never enacted that permit. So some time has passed. They got everything straight with the other components of the microbusiness and now again, coming forward with cultivation proposed in the basement. As stated in the intro, there will be a continuation of the distribution, manufacturing and retail operations in Suite B and then adding cultivation to Suite C. Reminder of where seventeen seventeen Fremont is, just on the other side of the mall, across from Santa Fe Market. And both Birch and Alpine were in part dedicated over to this property when the Auto Center Project renovation happened like in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Here's a little bit more of a detailed picture showing the outline of the property. And the uses that exist in the space, seventeen seventeen A is Round Table, seventeen seventeen B is Seaside Green. And then the basement below would also be Seaside Green, what they're proposing for the cultivation use. But you'll see on the screen now is the proposed floor plan. And on the left side, just a little bit of the descriptions of how this use will function. They're planning on doing three to four grows a year in hopes that they'll produce two hundred and fifty pounds of flower with each of those cycles that they grow. And they're assuming that some of that's not going to be good quality, but with their integrated microbusiness uses of manufacturing, they'll be able to incorporate that into products that don't require the highest quality of flower and maybe create oils or even topical butters. This is a photo of the inside of the space. The space in total is forty four hundred square feet, but the projected canopy or flower area would be around thirty six hundred. And they're looking at installing a good amount of LEDs, but also some high pressure sodium lights. So they can trick the plants into flowering and producing. They provided a lengthy description of the cannabis use, which is in the staff report. This was some of it taken from it. And what I wanted to illustrate in this slide is a handful of things, but most of all, how at almost every stage, they're needing to comply with some type of state regulation. So they'll have four to six employees working there. Tracking of the plant starts when they purchase cuttings from a state licensed nursery. And then from there, they're going to set the plants on the floor in trays to try to capture as much water runoff that they can, which is another layer of regulations from Monroe Peninsula Water Management District. Once the plants start growing and they're getting flowering, growing, when they get to a certain size, they're going to tag those and those are going to be also traced in the state required system. Waste is going to be discarded as required of state requirements with a licensed waste hauler. And then the flowers produced will be transferred to their distribution operation and then potentially also for sale to other buyers who don't happen to have that cultivation use in their own operations. As with any use permit, there's a handful of findings that are required. The findings in detail, which I'm not going to review in full, are on pages ten and eleven of the packet or pages four and five of seven of the staff report. The use is allowed. It's nothing different from really the microbusiness license that we looked at before, besides the cultivation use being added into the basement, which they're going to need to update their state permits. Anything about the site, it's existing, it's compatible and suitable for this type of use. And granting the permit is not going to be detrimental to anything or anybody in the city. In addition to the use permit findings, we're a bit conservative in our approach. There is a minor use permit that somebody can obtain for standalone cannabis cultivation. Also in the staff report on packet pages eleven to through thirteen are pages five to seven of seven of the actual staff report. We went through and we made all of these findings for the minor use permit as well, which these are a bit more interesting because it gets into lessening impacts in terms of waste and water and energy efficiency. So we went through and made those findings in support of also a recommendation to approve this project. And one ask on the recommendation that I have that you read directly from the slide, because we're going to potentially, Planning Commission will approve this use permit tonight to supersede use permit two zero two four dash zero eight to allow for both the operations and B and C to continue. All the conditions of approval from the original microbusiness permit were transferred over to this one. So it's all encompassing and includes a few more related to water use. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Okay, one of the problems that I saw on the news with cultivation areas was down in Greenfield where the people around started complaining about the odor. What are we doing to make sure that the odor stays with it? I mean, that's a lot of cultivation, the amount of poundage you talked about.
Right.
And just wondering if there's some kind of a scrub filter that, so that the smell of that plant doesn't get outside the building into the surrounding areas. I know that it's, you know, round table area in the car lot and stuff, but I just don't want to see it as a problem later that we didn't look at prior to.
I think we had those concerns even the first time around with the microbusiness use because they were doing manufacturing. And that's still them getting mass amounts of bulk material and processing it. So those conditions were carried over. If at any instance that has smelled in the city, as has happened with other businesses in the past, that's something that we don't tolerate and the conditions of approval are such that they're strong enough for us to be able to require it.
Through the chart. Have they grown like that there, that amount of cannabis?
Cultivation has never happened at this site.
Okay, see, that's what I'm concerned about. It's not the manufacturing of different products. But that's where they had the problem in Greenfield was the odor was drifting into the residential area.
Right.
And I just figured we could nip it in the bud.
Yeah, I'm not certain about the operations in Greenfield. I would imagine that most of those were.
I did too, when somebody giggled at.
Yeah. Yeah, just to try to make sense, the operations in Greenfield, I would imagine mostly were outdoor.
No, they have a big, they have a big building that's
A facility.
Across the street from City Hall.
Okay.
There are a lot of residential housing.
Yeah.
Near there. And I've been there and I've smelt it and it's, it's strong.
Yeah.
So I, I, I get your point. I think it's less of a concern around the car lots. But the odor is not going to be okay. And I think frankly, it would be a detriment to the round table if it was really strong all the time also. So I mean, I think that to your point, the, the, the concern that the conditions of approval include language that requires them to mitigate strong odors. That would be bothersome to anybody that, that whether that's a filtration system or, or whatever. You know, we just, I think you need to make sure that that's included in, in the existing conditions of approval or it needs to be dialed up considering we're, we're migrating from from the manufacturing to the cultivation.
They're included in the reso. They were included previously. The basement has thick walls. It used to be a bank, a bank vault. The owner of the property is the operator of Round Table. So I think we have a couple of things going where they're not going to want that use interrupted as well on top of our conditions of approval.
So this building sold? I'm sorry. But this building changed because it was.
The owners of Round Table have owned it as far back as two thousand and eight.
But there was a dental group in his face previously, but that was a number of years ago. And, 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 and I do remember when we looked at the growth, the, at the cultivation option, which I, I think was taken off the table. And I do remember you raised the same question back then.
I know.
Yeah. You're consistent.
Well, I was in the mechanical industry. And the exhaust could be pushed through a water reservoir to where the smell will stay in the reservoir and just the other will come out. But I just saw they had a problem with it. And being this is going to be in the middle of seaside.
Sure.
I'm not sure how Greenfield was, a little nowhere, maybe.
No, 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 it was right next to City Hall.
Was it?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, it's like you, you can't get through Gilroy without smelling garlic, but I think it's a little bit different.
And you see that the ductwork right here pulling up.
Yeah.
That's, that's my only concern. Other than that, I'm for it, you know? We've okayed this in the past. It's just when it comes down to actually growing. It can't get smelly.
Sure.
And any other questions?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to confirm that they don't plan to use any volatile chemicals in this.
No, that was the first time around in the manufacturing where they're non volatile only.
And if, you know, sometimes they change their plan, I assume they have to come back if they ever decide to expand it. Directions more like the first proposal.
They would.
Okay.
Other Commissioners, any other questions? All right, why don't we open this up to public comment? If anybody in the public would like to comment, or well, I'm sorry. If the applicant or the applicant representative is here and wishes to comment, we'll give them up to five minutes first to, to talk about the, the project. We have anybody representing the applicant? It doesn't look that way. So then we'll open it up to public comment. Anybody in the public wishes to, to comment, please identify yourself. You have three minutes to do so. Or a short period of time to identify yourself. You have three minutes to comment after that. We haven't done this in a little while, matter of practice, us. Do we don't have anybody online, do we? No raised hands? Okay, so seeing no public comment, we'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the, to this group, this body. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve U P twenty twenty four dash zero eight for the microbusiness with hopefully the concerns of what we've stated. So that the odor doesn't get out into the whole neighborhood.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have unanimous approval. Do we want to make a clarification that this is to supersede? The, the, in, in the recommendation, it says that proving this permit, but also to supersede U P twenty four dash oh eight. Shall we amend or add to that the, the superseding portion? Here you go.
Okay, change this from to incorporate or supersede twenty twenty five zero zero one to supersede U P twenty twenty four dash zero eight to allow for the cannabis cultivation at seventeen seventeen C Fremont Boulevard.
So we have a second just to that. Let's just formally go that.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just so we are official on all of that. All right. An appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of the decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal. Appeals are to be addressed to the city council and shall be filed with the city clerk. An appeal shall be accompanied by a required filing fee. That's in the event that anybody wants to make an appeal. With that said, that item of business is closed and we move on to sorry, I'm out of place here. Do we have any reports from the Commissioners?
Other than one question.
Yeah.
I retired as a December thirty first.
Congratulations. Very well. I'm just curious and, and it's been a little while since I've driven by there, but it was a long time coming on the renovations at the old Metiera Market. Are those finally moving forward or what's happening with that? I was just kind of curious because it, it sat, sat, sat for a long time. And then I saw work on the outside of it. It looks like they were beautifying it, but I don't know where that left off.
I do know they're working on it. I do not know how close they are to being done.
And is it basically, is, is it coming back just renovated?
It's, it's a heavy renovation.
I mean, it was a big renovation.
Yeah.
Sat for a long time or maybe stuff was happening inside that we never saw and they're finally doing the outside and the.
Most of the work was interior.
Okay.
So they're doing a bit of work on the outside. I think they're replacing the roof and whatnot, but most of the work is inside.
Okay.
Yeah. I would, I would assume that if they're whatever rules they had to comply with them, I, I don't look at that. Yeah.
I have two, two questions. Is anything happening to the old seaside market?
So they received their approvals and my understanding is they're still in talks with the property owner. Trying to get that to close. I believe they have until August before they would get to their second. So under the new code that was approved last year, I can administratively approve a one year extension. So I did that last August. So if we are not, if we're not there by this August, we'll have to look at an extension would take a more formal action. There's also the possibility that the project could be modified one way or the other. And if so, then we'll be looking at an amendment and carrying it forward from there.
And the other one is, A, still going to go to where the old Powersport is? Because I saw there's a for sale sign on.
Yeah, no, so that didn't work out either. There's a few other tenants that are, that are sniffing around that we've talked to.
This is the, the old motorcycle place, the base.
Yeah.
Where it was going to go in there. And then, and then what about the old Nurse's Barracks?
So we have an application that's being considered right now. That Beth, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about the revised, what's included in the revised application for Parker Flats? Which is what we're calling it now.
Great.
Parker Flats is the street that leads to that site. Its address, I think, is forty three, eighty six and eighty seven Parker Flats Road. We received a submittal a while ago, so still owned by the Glover's, still, you know, part of that process regarding, you know, how somebody gets a discretionary application before maybe they purchase the property. That's where that's at. We're looking at potentially a demolition of those two structures and up to sixty units being constructed instead.
Okay.
Formally was forty two.
Right, any, yeah, yes, sir.
I know this is an old dog, but they, I see that a lot of asphalt has been going on for non essential roads. And I'm just curious about the essential ones. And I know that you guys set it up and then I was sick and I didn't come to that meeting for the engineer. But I have some questions because of where they stopped Yosemite being repaved. How they did cul-de-sacs, everything else. And you go down the street of San Pablo, you see them all the way across. Why we're not doing the major runways? I mean, you come, you've got San Pablo's been redone, but yet La Salle and Or Grove haven't. Yosemite hasn't been done in the forty some years I've lived there. So I would just like to talk to the, the engineer that sets this stuff up to say, why did you stop where you did and not continue down Yosemite? I mean, you, they came so far and they put up, it was closed road, everything and it stopped at Mingo, Mingo, I think.
So I think best way to do that is either give me a call or send me an email and I'll get you in touch with Public Works Director. And you can just have that conversation with them directly and that'll be the, I think that'll be the simplest way to do that.
Good.
So just give me a call, send me an email.
Want to hear it too.
I do remember we came at the time and talked about how they they stepped priorities.
Yeah.
Right. And I talked with one of our council members and he told me they wouldn't even walk our street when he asked them to. And it's just horrible for us that have sports cars. It's unruly. It just wipes the car out.
By a truck.
Well, I have that too, but I'd still like to drive the other one once in a while.
Just sitting in the garage.
Well, I'm sorry, but the house down the street for me just sold for one point three million. I think it's time that we come up to the standard of the million dollar homes with our roads. And I can't see why, I've been there since nineteen eighty one. And it's never been touched. And it's the business, the fire trucks come down, the buses come down. I just can't see why we can't get these roads cleaned up. Or Grove is horrible. I mean, you see people swing way over by the car's part to miss all the crud that's in the road. So yes, I would like to talk to them.
Okay. Yeah, just send me an email or call me and we'll get that set up. Or if I don't hear from you, I'll probably just work with Jennifer to get you the contact information. His name's Thomas Corman. Yeah.
And second, I watched him redo this parking lot out here. Well, I've been in the business a long time and when I came after it rains and there was huge pogs all over this parking lot, that parking lot's not going to last. We need to get the people that did that back here and make this thing slope to drains. Otherwise, you're going to be looking at the same amount of money, which I'm sure was not cheap to redo that parking lot. This is why I say we have to have people in positions that know what they're doing. And unfortunately, when you see what you see, you know, it's not going to last. And we're going to spend our money. I like to spend our money wisely and get the job done correctly. So yeah, I'd like to talk to them.
Yeah, that would be another great conversation with Public Works Director.
It'd be good with all of us because then it would be less combative.
Since we're doing questions, I I'm curious as to what is the current situation with the hotel? Have they broken ground? Do they have an estimate on when it's going to be operating?
The golf course resort.
Oh. I believe they were working on. I believe they were working on getting their financing, so no, I do not know.
Oh, okay.
What the exact dates are. I mean, there was a groundbreaking, their permits have been issued.
Okay.
Um. Or at least I know their permits have been approved. I think they've been issued, but I'm not hundred percent on that, but I know they're approved. So they're able to go whenever they're ready.
Okay.
Hey, any more questions or reports from Commissioners? All right, so we'll go to reports from staff then.
Uh, just two real quick things. So major transit stops. The state provided some guidance in January and. I'm talking with Ambag and the other jurisdictions, so we can try to. Provide the commission with some information regarding what other jurisdictions are doing. Um, so hopefully. Late March, early April have something. Also, planning on, I'm, I was hoping to have it for this meeting. I just couldn't get it ready in time. But uh, give you an update about the um. Some of the statistics regarding permit processing and the impacts of that uh ordinance amendment we did last year. Um, you might remember that it uh, we changed some of our processes and. Some items that used to come to Planning Commission have been getting approved with public, public notice was done. But they've been getting approved administratively and so wanted to bring some stats and let you know what kind of projects they were. Um, like I said, wanted to get it done for today, but just didn't get it done in time. So sometime in March, we'll have that. I'm not gonna. Now, I'm going to make sure that we've got another item before I bring, I'm not going to call a special meeting just so we can talk about statistics. Um. But uh, yeah, so that'll be coming up the next available uh slot.
And I think we do have one more question. Go, we're we're going to go backwards.
Okay.
Oh, but he did have a question.
It'll come back.
Is that all from staff then?
That is all from staff.
Next item, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn. My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.